Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Boards meeting for November 9th, 2020. I'm Donald Campbell, the Chair of this Board, and I'd like to ask the other members of the Board to please introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. Bruce Lee Clark.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hi, this is Jeanne Jenkins.
Good evening, this is Jim Carroll.
Hello, Sarah Perrin.
And also with us tonight, we have our Town Manager, Stuart Hurd, Assistant Town Manager, Dan Monks, Nancy Lively taking minutes, right now Shannon Barsati, our Community Development Directors in the meeting, and we also, of course, have Cat TV. So before we start this meeting, I need to read this one piece, which says that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, state of emergency declared by Governor Scott in pursuant to Addendum 6, Executive Order 1-20, Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting, however, the public may view it on Cat TV and call in at 1-646-558-8656, entering the meeting code 828-1969-9460. And I'll put that up on the screen right now while I read the rest of this. So the, this is the dial-in information, if technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined. All votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with the law. So again, the dial-in is 646-558-8656. Meeting ID is 828-1969-9460. Press pound twice when prompted. And because of the new Zoom update, I can no longer unmute participants, so you'll need to unmute yourself by pressing star six. And I may remind you when we get to the meeting, I apologize for the inconvenience of that. So we will be taking public comment from 6:05 until 6:20 at the latest, and then we will be moving on to the Y and the UCS report, a net metering agreement, community policing update, managers' report, agenda, other business, and then we have an executive session at the end of that. Okay. First order of business tonight is the consent agenda. This is the minutes of October 26th, 2020, and the warrants as circulated. I know that is our custom to speak to Stuart about any questions you may have on the warrants ahead of time, but if you have not had a chance to talk to him about any questions you may have, now is the time, and Nancy Lively can take any corrections. There are two minutes. For the purposes of discussion, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeanne. Okay, discussion on the consent agenda. Seeing none, I would ask you all to please unmute yourselves. And all in favor of the consent agenda as circulated, please say aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, consent agenda has passed. The next order of business is public comment. We will take public comment. And it's always difficult to tell on Zoom who public comment is and who is not, but I think I recognize this number, so I'm going to admit the... Let's see, I have several people in here, and they are all on to the next. Okay, so I'm admitting into our meeting caller ending in 645. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. We're glad to have you here tonight, and I would ask you to, before you unmute yourself, to please turn down the volume on your TV or your computer, however you're listening to this on Cat TV, and then please press star six, so we can hear you. So caller ending in 645, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting.
Good evening, Select Board and all concerned. My name is Eric Zubik, and I'm calling about a property that I have in Harwood Hill that has been damaged due to the Beldon and MSK installed water line. And basically, I'm looking for some help with some resolution. The brick property was damaged during construction in the first week of August, and this has been going on for several months. I've had some vague discussion that it will be corrected, but I really need the town and MSK to step in and make sure that Beldon returns the property to good repair as it was before the construction took place. So, you know, I'd be glad to follow up with this in a sidebar or review this in the next meeting to see what progress has been made. I've just had some frustration over the last couple of months with a lot of finger pointing and mixed messages, so I'm looking for some resolution. And I appreciate in advance all of your time.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate your call. I know your lawyer's been in touch with us. We've had, Town staff has circulated this, so Stuart or Dan, is there anything you can say or would say about this at this point?
Well, the only thing I would say, Donald, is that I believe resolution is underway. We have some nice weather this week. I know that Beldon has mobilized to do the work. I think Eric sent me a copy of some documents that he was required to sign in order for them to actually work on his properties. And I'm hopeful that this issue will be resolved within a matter of days. And if, in fact, there is a dispute after the fact or after the construction is completed and Beldon believes they have done the work, then that would be another issue.
So Mr. Zubik, I guess I would invite you to stay in touch both with the Town staff on this, Stuart and Dan, and as things play out, if you don't see action in the very near future, invite you to be back in touch with us. Is that all right?
Yeah, certainly. I would like to ask that we could discuss this further at the next, next Select Board meeting.
Well, let's see where the, I mean, we may or may not be able to, but you're certainly always welcome to call in during the citizens' comment period, and let's see if the staff can, see what the staff can do to get this resolved in the interim.
The only other ask would be, can we have Stuart and Jason from MSK review the issues?
Stuart, you are reviewing the issues, aren't you?
Oh, yes. I mean, the issues have been reviewed. We've been following the content of the problems. I mean, there is some, Mr. Zubik has some concerns about some damage to his property during construction. Beldon, as far as I know, has agreed to repair what they believe was damaged. There is pre-construction video, I understand. There's a, there's a a study done by a structural engineer at MSK's request and cost, and those things have all been out there and will come into play once we get the contractor on site and get the contractor to do the work. And it's, it really is, because this is a private property, Mr. Zubik and Beldon need to work together to resolve this to their mutual satisfaction. And the town and MSK are not at a point where we can advise or command repairs, because then that takes us into a issue of liability. And I would be very concerned about the town entering into that kind of a situation. We've already had that kind of a situation in another one of these projects, if you recall.
Well, let's not, let's not, yeah, let's hope, let's not make a problem that's not a problem yet. And so, Mr. Zubik, if you are willing to please, let's see how the, how the people can deal with the problem maybe in the interim, and let's be hopeful that they can address your concerns. And certainly, if you continue to have concerns, we, you know, we welcome further input from you. Probably email might be a good way to do this with me, or you're certainly welcome to contact the Town staff in any number of ways, but glad to help you try to work this out.
There's certainly been plenty of emails on the subject, and I hope to have an optimistic resolution. But, you know, the big concern I had is I think it's important to physically always review the issue instead of just trading emails back and forth. And I've been disappointed I haven't been able to get Jason from MSK, the engineer record, on site to review and/or Stuart, because the individuals that have been out there from MSK have said they can't comment, they can't review, it's above their pay grade. So Beldon, to date, has said that they have not committed to repairing any of the cracks that I physically looked at with them. I think it should be a pretty easy corrective action plan or recovery plan to review the original condition of the building and the new damage that originated off the undercut foundation. So, you know, I would have hoped that would have taken place a couple of months ago. We just, you know, tend to keep drifting on this hot topic, so.
Okay.
Again, I would ask that Stuart and/or Jason come to the job site, meet, physically see it, and help me, help be an advocate with Beldon instead of just asking me to to work with Beldon direct and alone, where they've already said that they can't help me. So that's the final say I've got there.
Okay. Well, thank you for being in touch. We will certainly keep, keep on top of these, of our contractors and invite you to come back if you don't have satisfaction eventually. Thank you for your call this evening.
Very good. We'll circle back next meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I have a couple of other, one other call that, I don't know if this is a caller calling in for citizens' comment, but I'm going to admit caller ending in 852 into the Bennington Select Board meeting, and I ask you to please turn down the volume on your, your TV or your computer, however you're listening to Cat TV, and please press star six to unmute yourself, and then give us your name and tell us what's on your mind. Caller ending in 852. So caller ending in 802-blank-blank-blank-blank-blank-852, you are in the Bennington Select Board meeting. Unfortunately, you have to press star six to unmute yourself. It's no longer a function that I can do from this end. Please press star six, and you'll be entered into the meeting, or you'll be unmuted, so we can hear you. Okay, that caller has hung up. So we are going to move on to our next, I'm going to close public comment at this point. We're going to go on to the next part of our agenda, and I'm going to start admitting people who are in the waiting room to speak to us on this next item, which is the Y and UCS report. And Shannon, while I'm admitting all these people, I am going to let you do some introductions, okay?
Sounds good. All right, thanks, Donald. Good evening, everyone. Well, it's been almost a year since we've had an update from the Berkshire Family YMCA, which is managing our Bennington Recreation Center programs as well as many other communities. So this is an opportunity to hear Becker, who's the Bennington Branch Manager for the Berkshire Family YMCA, and it looks like Taylor Haynes is there. Is your title still the Health and Wellness Director?
Programs Manager.
Programs Manager, great. And Donald, I just wanted to also mention that we're going to move, I think, I would suggest that we move right from Kayla and Taylor's presentation to the UCS presentation, and then have questions after those, if that makes sense. Oh, it looks like you're muted.
Spacebar mute, unmute didn't work. I've made Beth a co-host, so Beth, you can share your screen. If anybody else needs me to, needs to share their screen in this, I'll need to make you a co-host. Kayla, is that you? Are you going to share something too?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I will make you a co-host as well.
All right, so Kayla and Taylor.
Okay, so I put together a quick presentation, brief, to kind of give high level what we've been up to, and then answer questions if there's anything of particular interest. So I will go ahead and share, trying to share my screen. Okay, one second. Okay, you okay?
We can see it. Looks good.
Thank you. All right, so the first thing we did was got all of our members transitioned into our DAXCO membership database. That started partly because that was the plan, and also because the old system happened to crash, basically, right when I got started in November. So the update is that all of the active members are in the new system. Um, I wanted to give the membership types. I know there are a lot of different membership types, so I just listed them out here. And then I was able to pull numbers of each type. So those are the numbers you see next to each of them. Somewhat simplified, so that, there are a lot of different membership types, but that's where we're at. Another thing that's discussed a lot is how many people from outside of Bennington and North Bennington come to the Rec Center. So using the DAXCO database, I was able to pull up those numbers, and that's them. Okay, before I move on to programming, do you want me to answer any questions about that at this point, or just keep going through?
Do you have a thumbnail number for what percentage of users are non-Bennington? I don't know what your total use is in.
So I would, I would say that maybe 25%, that would be just a guess. The tricky thing is, I'm going to go back to the screen. The corporate rate is a discounted rate, and that's where a lot of the non-resident members fall into. So they work for one of our corporate partners, and it's a much cheaper rate than the non-resident. So you'll see the non-resident numbers are not that high, but a lot of them are actually non-resident corporate rate.
Corporate. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, the fun stuff here. So the Y focuses on three main focus areas, youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Rather than breaking them down, I feel like a lot of what we do kind of encompasses multiples. I just wanted to give a quick summary of what we've been up to. So while we were shut down from March 15th to June 15th, we got creative. We moved a lot of our classes outdoors. So you'll see a CPR class taking place, group fitness taking place outdoors, and we volunteered with the food distribution a few times. I know Jeanne has given some updates for me at meetings, but I wanted to talk about our reopening, just high-level changes that we made, distancing equipment, adding in the red and green markers. The pool reservation system allows us to have a limited number of people in the pool, but also guaranteed pool time, so they don't show up and then get turned away. So it's very busy. The pool is almost always at capacity. As far as internally, the staff did additional training for COVID. They get screened every day. We have a very detailed control plan that I worked closely with Paul Dansero from the town. I worked really closely with Mark, Steve, Dan, the facilities guys, who are amazing. They've been really, really helpful. Truly just a quick little thank you. Okay, programs. So right before COVID, we started some new programs that, this is a movement playgroup. Again, the group exercise outdoors. This is a photo of teen strength and conditioning, which is now transitioned to teen hour, which is when we have a support staff person to help teens in the facility, so they can use it, feel comfortable and confident. Swim lessons, we restarted with modifications both for COVID and to improve the quality. Smaller numbers, we use a YMCA curriculum, and they're going really well. They actually just finished tonight. We are working with the Senior Center to figure out, now that they're reopening and bringing people back into the Senior Center, how we can work together to continue to build that calendar of health and wellness offerings at that location also. This is a photo of a modified water exercise. So pre-COVID, water exercise classes were 30 to 40 people. Now we have a limit of 10, but they are going very, very well. This one is taught by Jane DeSanto. We also have Andrea Malinowski doing multiple classes. It's great to have them in safely. And then here is a photo of Andrea's Fit and Fab class, which takes place at Willow Park. All right. So we found out that Southshire Soccer, which is a really popular community program, was not going to be able to do their full program this summer or this fall. And we were able to fill in that gap and then have plans to work with them next fall. So we will complement the program. We had, of course, some great numbers, 78 kids, amazing community volunteers, and even some high school soccer athletes who coached, which was great. Oh, the summer program, the summer that kept going. So we were able to, despite the construction, despite COVID, we were able to figure out a way to offer the summer camp, which is really an essential service. We think of it both as youth development, but also social responsibility, because it helps working families with our extended hours and really affordable rates. We were able to bring the kids from the bus from Willow Park to the Rec Center three times a week. We partnered with Avi Group to bring them lunches. We had seven, four different children, and we averaged about 30 to 40 kids per week. It was an amazing setting. I mean, Willow Park was, it had challenges with being open air and, you know, just needing a lot of eyes on a lot of kids, but it was a great location for so many reasons. Those are community bikes that the town worked in, had a couple of wheel stays that Taylor orchestrated, which is so fun. Okay, and then the summer program, as we learned that schools would not be reopening traditionally, we moved that into an extended program in the afternoon, so kids could do their virtual classes in the morning and then come to Willow Park for at least a half day. And then we would do pop-up days at Willow Park while we were working on what was next, which ended up being the school age hub at Lake Perrin. So the school age hub at Lake Perrin was made possible, a grant from the state of Vermont, recognizing that these children who are only going to school hybrid, so they go two days per week in person, and then they're home doing virtual school the other days, we provide virtual learning support. So there was a grant to get that going. We started last week at Lake Perrin, Wednesday, Thursday, and Fridays. Again, amazing location. We're so lucky to have such a great spot. And the reason it's not at Willow Park, of course, is we needed, as the weather gets colder, like an enclosed heated space and somewhere with Wi-Fi that we could have reliable internet connection for them. A lot of these programs were made possible because of grant support. So there were a variety of grants that we were happy to put to use, keep things affordable for families. And that is it. So, yeah, I guess, Taylor, is there anything you want to add, since you're right here?
No, I mean, I think that despite all of the challenges we faced this summer and this fall and into the winter, our programming continued to move forward. And we, I think it was beneficial, because we were able to start programs that we probably wouldn't have otherwise.
Right.
And make more connections within the community. So all in all, very positive summer/fall experience.
Yeah. Thinking outside of the box led us to start things that the community needed, and we were able to, like, adapt as things went, so. And again, I cannot say thank you enough to the Town of Bennington facilities guys. They have been so helpful, so.
That's great to hear. We like, we like to hear that Town staff is being so helpful. Not that we would expect anything less than that, but we had a great tour, or not tour, it was just a sort of a site visit to see how things were coming along this afternoon, and saw the tremendous progress that's being made there. It's so incredibly exciting. I wonder, has the, the sound of construction and the bang-bang and dig-dig and all that kind of stuff affected the programmatic abilities to use the pool area?
We work pretty closely. I go to the weekly construction meetings. If I know there's going to be really substantial noise, we, you know, we leave for a couple of hours, but it's been pretty minimal. We've been able to work together on schedule for it, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Kayla and Taylor. I really can't say enough about how wonderful they have been to work with and so flexible and creative. I mean, they've actually grown programs during a pandemic, and I just think it's pretty incredible. So I just want to commend you on everything that you've done, and especially for, for kids during this time and for working families, to be able to have that kind of continuity and to keep those programs going when school started just meant so much, I think, in the community. So thank you.
Shannon, we did have a question at our last meeting about fees, which is, are the prerogative of the Board. But is there anything that you want to say about that Y fees to possibly head off that question coming up again?
Are you talking membership fees?
I was, I guess, membership fees, sure, but programmatic fees also. I mean, it seems to me, from the outside, you're making a tremendous effort to keep those fees down, and I would like to give you an opportunity to say that, if that's the case.
Yeah, that's extremely important. I have three kids myself, so I, of course, am aware of program registration fees. One thing I'll say is we've seen slowly an increase of the number of people who are seeing the value of the Y membership. So you pay a little bit more for your monthly membership, but then you get everything included, which is one model. The other thing is, for example, the school day out, the hub at Lake Perrin, is $40 a day for 8:30 to 5:30. But because we went through the state of Vermont, we're able to accept childcare financial assistance, and the YMCA also offers financial assistance, income fees. So of the 15 children who are currently enrolled, we have a capacity of 20, all but two are doing at least one of those, and some both, a combination of.
So. And that's important to note, too, with all of our programs, including all of our adult fitness programs. If we look at our, especially our senior fitness, a lot of amazing organizations in the community actually help pay for some of those members to use the facility and participate in classes. And we help navigate that, too, and guide them where they need to go, because we want everyone to be able to, obviously, participate, so.
That's fantastic that you're finding outside resources to make everything more, not only your expanding program, but you're making it more affordable for our town people, and that is something that this Board really appreciates, so thank you for that. Sorry to interrupt there, Shannon. Did you, how's your, what's your next segue here?
I'm sorry, there we go. Looks like Beth Wallace is jumping in. So we have Lorna Mattern, Betsy Rathbun-Gunn, and Beth Wallace from UCS, United Children's Services, and Jack Byer. Is Jack here as well, from Goldstone Architecture, to talk about the new addition to the Bennington Rec Center, which is a childcare facility as well as community spaces?
Did you mention Jeff Goldstone? He's also here.
Is Jeff here, too? Jeff Goldstone is also here, and we all, we were all able to... Is Jeff here too? Jeff Goldstone is also here. And we all, we were all able to do a tour today to see the progress. For those of you who haven't been to the rec center or, you know, take a stop by and see it, it's really transforming. And to go into the space was really fantastic to, to, to be able to see what those rooms are going to be like. So who is taking the lead?
That's great, Shannon. I'm glad that you.
Go ahead, Lorna.
Well, I'm just going to jump in. This is Lorna and I'm, I'm sorry, my, I'm at home, like many of you, and my internet isn't great. So there's a little bit of a delay. So I'm just going to start off and then I'm going to hopefully not say too much and leave it to Beth and Betsy. But sorry, I missed the tour and wasn't able to go, but I, I hope like me, you now are even much more excited about the project now that you've seen it, that it's really moving. And even though despite COVID delay, it's really catching up and really moving fast and furiously. I just wanted to do, say quickly to Kayla, thank you for your flexibility to be able to work with us to be able to make that happen as well. And thanks for your presentation. I just learned a lot. I really appreciate it. So Beth is, and Betsy are going to really take over and Jack is here to answer any of those technical questions that we can't answer. So I'll throw it over to Beth or Betsy. I'm not sure who's starting, but.
So I'm going to start and then, and then Beth will take it in certain slides. So again, thank you for coming by to see the site. We were really excited to walk you through it. It is really taking shape and we look forward to having it be completed sooner versus later. So what we wanted to do today was kind of walk you through some of the things that are going on outside of the building because that's equally exciting. Many of you may know that we expanded the parking lot and including expanding the parking lot, we were able to do a drive-through piece that will allow for buses and parents to drop children off at the end, new entry into the site. So that's making it safer. It's making it have a lot more flexibility when it comes to access and parking. So we were pleased that someone had a drone and was able to take a picture of this expanded parking lot. Right now it has a lot of stuff back on it again, but it gives you an idea of what it will look like once the facility is completed. We're also very excited because there's been lots of questions about the softball field and where is it going to come back and how is it going to look? So we wanted to talk with you a little bit today about the softball field, which is coming back. Again, thank you very much to Herman Construction. This was part of their donation to the project. And we just wanted to make sure that the community understood that this was our commitment to returning the softball field in a slightly different place, but certainly maybe even in a slightly better condition than what we had before. So we're excited about that. And then we're also excited about a playground development, you know. I, I want to say thanks to our federal partners who have invested heavily in this project and our other funders. But as of today, which is really good news, they approved some additional funding for us to complete the playground this fall so that we can get that done while the heavy equipment is there. So Beth is going to do the playground piece.
Sorry for the echo. We're did you mute? Okay. We're, we're trying to do this without masks and, and stay physically distant with windows open. Thank goodness. It's such a beautiful day, but we also know there's a little, a little transition period. So thanks for bearing with us. So this is a schematic put together by our playground vendor, O'Brien and Sons. So take that, know that this is, you know, a softball field as he designed it in his mind. But we know that we haven't had dugouts before and what the fence you see here will be there. And we're actually able to recycle the fence that was taken down and we'll have additional fencing around the playground on, on these ends too. Can you see my cursor when I hover over that? Oh, great. So this is what the playground looks like together. The building is off to the side here. We have the preschool playground. We have a little bit of an incline here and then we have the infant toddler space. We're planning to put wood chips in as the fall surface in both of those, but it was important for the infants and toddlers to be close to the building and to the patios. The preschool playground, this is what we're looking at right now. Again, those gray blocks there are the building. The softball field you'll see home plate is back here. If anybody's been by the, the construction site recently, home plate is actually just in front of the construction trailer, if that helps you orient. The, the basketball courts are back on this side here. If you were to extend the, the picture a little bit, but we have this great multi-use, multifunctional playground. It's called a WeVOS system here with climbing and balancing and slides and more climbing and kind of a, when I was a kid, it would have been a tire swing, but it looks a little different, same concept now. I don't, I guess they don't do those anymore. We do have swings for our preschoolers and we were very fortunate and grateful to receive thirteen thousand five hundred dollars from the, the state of Vermont Building and Grounds Department and a grant that we that we wrote and that will allow us to add some accessible equipments to this playground. Our we really wanted to focus on infant and toddler plates, play space because we heard that from the community that there aren't a lot of opportunities for infants and toddlers to play in our community and, and also that we make this as accessible as possible. You know, within our means to do so. So this is preschool. Then we have our infant toddler playgrounds, again, up by the building. Those trees there are actually basketball court. But we are still planning to pour our tricycle track. And then inside the tricycle track will have the wood chips and the infant toddler equipment. We have a very cool little dramatic play house back in the corner that actually has play elements all around it and is open in the back. Then we have our transportation. This is not a camper. I told everyone, I thought this was like a little camper on wheels. But it's actually an extension of the, the train there. Kids can crawl through that space and then there are benches on the inside. There's a musical element there. We have signs around the playground so that when kids are on their tricycles, they're driving by, they're pretending they're really driving. And then perhaps the coolest element is this charging station. It was actually originally a gas pump kind of playstation. And Betsy said, wait a second, you know, this is 21st century. We need, we need this to be an electrical car station. So our playground vendor actually went back to his designer, said, can we customize this? They love the idea. And now we have, you know, VT instead of LA, an electrical charging station around that tric- track. I'm going to turn it back to Betsy here.
Okay. So we are very excited about being able to add the playground. And we were able to find additional funding that is going to help us with the finishing pieces of this project. That includes that we were able to receive a USDA grant. That USDA grant is helping to fund the kitchen, the commercial kitchen. And a lot of the equipment that's going into the multipurpose community space along with some of the other materials that we need to have as part of this project. The thirteen thousand dollars that Beth just spoke about for the playground. We were fortunate to receive some CARES funding from our Head Start program. And we decided that we would look at making this building as germ-free as possible, you know, certainly something from now into the future, we're going to be thinking about. So we've added touchless faucets and automated door at the shared entrance to the main facility. And we also upgraded the walls of all the bathrooms so that they can be cleaned down too. So we're able to take our CARES funding and put it directly to making this space as germ-free as possible. We're also in the process of hopefully getting funding that will provide some air purification systems and some flooring upgrades. You know, this flooring upgrade will also allow us to maintain the floor in a much more economical way, but also in a cleaner way too. So we've really tried to look over the last few months at all of our surfaces and how do we maintain a building that will have lots of people in it one day and keep it as clean and as germ-free as possible? You know, it is time for thanks because we couldn't do this project without the Town of Bennington, but also from Kayla and Mark. Oh my goodness, really. They come to every meeting, every single week. Mark doesn't see a problem. He can't solve. He has been so thoughtful, so helpful with us. Lots of pipes, lots of water in the beginning, if you remember this project. Really can't say enough to Mark and Kayla for being so flexible and willing to help us through this project. And all to the rec center members. They had to repark over time. They had to go in different entrances. This was not something that didn't impact the membership too. So we really want to say thank you. And Jack and Herman Construction have just been absolutely wonderful. And Jack is here to answer any questions about the facility, if anybody has any questions about that. And then we were also pleased that we had a private donation that gave us ten thousand dollars for the playground also and our kids' learning kitchen that we're really excited about that we're adding to this facility. So lots of thanks, lots of some additional funding that we're really pleased to have. So as part of the Community Development Block Grant, we applied and hopefully will get funded these new type of air purification upgrades that will allow us to make sure that the air that we breathe in this facility is as germ-free as possible. These are far more complicated than I could ever explain. So at the end, if you have questions about these, Jack is available to answer questions about this, but we've worked with the engineers. And these are being put in many schools, many hospitals, lots of public buildings to make sure that the air that is being circulated around the space is being clean and sanitized to the best of our ability.
Betsy, is this just in the UCS side?
The other piece of our commitment to this was the sprinklers and the new reception area. So Beth, you want to talk about that?
Okay, so some of the upgrades, as Betsy mentioned, were, were this, the sprinkler work, which has been ongoing. And again, we really extend our gratitude to all of the members and to Kayla and her staff for being so flexible. It may come as a surprise to many that due to code and adding on to an existing building, not only did we have to sprinkle the new addition, but we also had to install a sprinkler system in the old addition, which lucky us, now our rec center is sprinkled. But you even need to sprinkle the pool. So I thought I would take a picture of the new sprinkler system above the pool in case there's ever a fire in the pool. We got that done. Apparently it was very loud, but worthwhile and, and over with now. We have sprinkler, the, the painting still has to happen, but we have a sprinkler system throughout the fitness center in the locker rooms. We are, we're fully prepared in the existing building now. The other thing that you'll see in this bottom left-hand corner is we've done some work and collaborated with the Y and Rec Center staff around the new entrance. When the project is complete, entrance to the building will be back in the front as originally designed and, and people will be able to drop off folks in the front of the building and, and enter rates on the northern end instead of having to go around the side. So you'll be coming in the doors here. There will be a vestibule. I think Betsy mentioned that these doors will be automated, so touch-free. And then as you enter here, the community multipurpose room is off to the side and we'll have a new reception desk that the Y and Rec Center staff, staff will, will welcome folks into and, and you would go off to the left there to access the, the rec center facility. So we've put a lot of effort into that to make sure that it meets everybody's needs. Jack has worked really hard to make sure that there's still visibility of the exercise room and supervision, but that it's a, it's a very cool and fitting space.
So, you know, when will this be done, right? We are hoping that this will be done mid-winter. Sometime in February, early February, mid-February. And that we will take a couple of weeks to move in and we are hoping by then we're in a different place and space with COVID, hopefully, and we'll be able to start accepting and place children in the facility. So lots will be happening over the next few weeks. You know, windows are already going in, siding is going to go on very soon. Everybody knows that winter is coming. We need to close up this building and we need to get it completed. So we are excited that we will be completing it, you know, early in 2021. So I'm happy to take questions now.
So, Board, I don't know if, if you have many questions, but it certainly is an exciting thing. Betsy, it's really, every time we ask you for an update, you tell us some more good news. The fact that you, since we last spoke, you've raked in almost two hundred and ten thousand dollars to make this a bigger and better project is just astounding that this is all happening with the effort of your group and not costing the town anything and, and really, really phenomenal. Thank you so much for that. I, I was wondering a little bit of those air handling systems. It sounds like maybe that's a, a Jack question, but is that something that serves the entire rec center or is that, would that just be serving the UCS side of things? The unmute button, he's getting there.
Yeah, so it, it currently is planned for the multipurpose room, the lobby, the new entrance lobby area and the entire preschool wing, but nothing, you know, inside the existing building per se.
In the pool, yeah. Moist area to probably try to do it, yeah. But so, so fair amount of advantage for the community in that the lobby and the, the shared community kitchen and all that kind of stuff would be
Right.
would be greater protection from virus and bacteria stuff.
That's correct. Yep.
Excellent. So questions from the board? I see a couple of hands up. Let's start with Mr. Jim Carroll.
Thank you. And thank you all for the work that you've done. And I'm, I'm just exceedingly curious about how the hell you got the sprinklers over the pool? Did you have to drain the pool? You did.
I can, yeah, we did that, or they did that while we had our annual shutdown. And the two weeks every year. So that was actually extended one week so we could do that at the same time that the point really happens.
Oh, anyway, it, it looks wonderful and I'm so grateful for all the work that you've done. It's going to be years and decades of wonderful use for the town. And again, thank you.
That's great, Jim. Jean, go ahead, please.
Yeah, thanks. I was on the tour. I was lucky enough to be able to go today. So I think I asked some of the questions that I had then, but I was sitting here listening to, you know, everything that you've said and I suddenly realized that you're, you're not only attending construction meetings and you know, doing all that you have to do, but you're also doing your jobs that you, what you're paid to do on a daily basis. So wow, I'm sure all of you are incredibly busy, incredibly tired, and we all are incredibly grateful.
That's for sure. That's for sure. Any other questions from board members? We, we have an architect here. It's always fun to needle architects. Anyone want to take a poke at him? No? We, yeah, we had some.
If I could add, Dawn, that if anybody does have questions about the project, we're going to have a Zoom meeting. We stopped having these Pulse meetings. But sometimes people get, you know, they want to know why is one part metal and one part wood and what, what is going to be there? So we have set up on Wednesday, December sixteenth, another Zoom meeting that will do a Pulse meeting. And again, if people have questions about the construction themselves, they're always always available to answer whatever I know, but I would turn it over to Jack because Jack really is the, the master architect of this whole project. So but we're also going to do a Pulse meeting to answer any questions about programming or operations.
Great. I, go ahead, Shannon.
I was just going to say, those meetings are great because we usually do them with Carrie from the Senior Center and Kayla and Taylor. and Kayla and Taylor from the rec center, and so it's a great way to just kind of dig in with more recreation questions. So we'll all be there.
Do you have a time for that?
So five. Five thirty, um which was the same time, same scheduled date that that we had had on our original schedule. We will put that out, that Zoom link, it'll be open, it'll be public, we'll put it out on our Facebook page. Shannon, you have the link now, so if you want to put it on the the town of Bennington um website, you can find it there.
Great. Um, I just wanted to also mention just the spirit, I think you get a sense of this from the presentations, but how much we're all working together, just there's this great spirit of collaboration, so we got, there's another grant that the town got from the buildings and grounds at the state level. So we're gonna be fencing off, if you're familiar with um the green space that sort of wraps all around the where um the facility is and then goes around to the community garden. We're gonna fence that off so that that can also be space that can be used for programming, particularly with kids. It really hasn't been a safe spot to do programs. So now, you know, we can have kickball games in there, whatever. And we're also working with the community garden, um Megan Harrington, who's also the director of the Bennington Health Department, is the man of now the community garden. And so it's just, it's just exciting to see the whole rec center campus become, you know, even even more than than it has been, you know, because we're using all these spaces and we're working together uh on all of these projects, so it's it's an exciting time.
So it truly is turning into a community, and that's really exciting. Go ahead, Lorna.
Yeah. Uh, I just wanted to add um that, you know, we really appreciate the town, Stu, Dan, uh taking on this crazy idea that we brought forth. Um, I don't know, almost three years ago, uh and having faith in us to to be able to have it get done. And uh so we just really want to appreciate your vision and your um willingness to partner with UCS and UCH to be able to have this happen for the town, and uh it's very much appreciated.
It's great, we do have one caller who uh seems to want to come into this meeting, this is a caller that we had some questions from at our last meeting. And um so I'm going to invite caller ending in oh two five into the Bennington Select Board meeting and and uh Ms. White, I'd ask you to please mute your phone, I mean um unmute your phone by pressing star six. And uh remember to turn the volume down on your um on your screen before you do. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting.
Hi, Don, Nancy White calling. Um, I've got a series of different questions, but I have to say first, i- it's alarming how the citizens of Bennington were totally shut out of any of these discussions or decisions about the UCS building being at the rec center. We had no say in the renovations at the rec center that UCS planned, but I believe we're going to be asked to go on, to go out to bond for that facility. Um, first question I have, you told us for a couple of years that the select board was gonna set the membership rates. You tabled the discussion last year until this year, are you not going to talk about the membership rates tonight?
Uh, no, we're not gonna talk about the membership rates, that that select board does set those, you're right, and we will talk about those at budget time when we know what the, when we have the uh recommendations from the staff.
Okay, I I'd emailed Stuart and asked when the last time the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Nancy.
I emailed Stuart and asked the last time the membership rates had been increased at the rec center. He said it was over ten years ago, does anybody know the last time the rates were increased?
Stuart, I'd lean, I'd look to you for that.
That's the best I I can do, um I I I don't recall the last time that they were raised. We've, we've talked uh a number of times with various boards over the, over the last few years about whether or not raising those rates would be uh something that we wanted to do. Generally, the select board has said, no, we don't want to raise those rates at the present time. We want to increase the use, we want people to enjoy the center, and that's really kind of where we've left it.
I did, um we have a, the rates posted in the rec center lobby still, it says February one, two thousand, oh, um, two thousand eleven.
Well, I guess.
But Nancy, if you want to be part of this conversation about rates, if you're advocating to increase them or whatever, that that would be happening at budget time, um you know, when we would look at the annual budget and figure out what needs to be, what needs to happen.
Well, I guess my concern is, if, I think if you had been increasing the rates.
I'm sorry, Nancy, go ahead.
I guess my question is, had you been increasing the memberships, five dollars a year starting a decade ago, we would already have had extra money for programming, we would know what people would be willing to pay. I I I question if if we needed the why at all, if we've been doing the membership rates at our, on our own. I want to know why nobody ever brought up that the fact that our local rec center was gonna be turned into a regional facility. I never heard that in three years.
Well, we talked about this ad nauseam in open session, time after time, we saw, we saw uh detailed descriptions of it. Uh, we had many, many presentations about this, this, this was not a surprise to anybody paying attention in the community. It was in the paper, you know, this is something that's really been out there, so you know, this board ultimately, yes, decided that it was really important for our community to have a strong, to increase our childcare capacity in this community so we could have uh make it easier for people to work and children to have better lives, but also to increase the functioning of our uh rec center by increasing the opportunities for public um engagement such as the community kitchen and uh a better way of admitting people and eventually building more capacity. The third phase that you've talked about is has not been designed, it has not been conceived of, it has not been budgeted, it is, we're not going to bond. We we, it's a great idea, we hope we get there, but nothing about that is being considered at this point. So uh, Nancy, you know, we did get your questions last week, we uh, there was quite a lot of data there about um the breakdown of who uses it and we will talk about fees at budget season and um proposed rates, so that's, that's pretty much, we have to update you on that. Do you have any questions for this crew of people that are creating this project?
I do, what is the total size of the UCS building?
The total size, is that what the question was, Donald? You want square footage?
Yep, it started at fifty-five hundred square feet, what is it at today?
I think we've been pretty consistent about that, Jack.
Um, yeah. I don't, I I don't know where the the five thousand square foot number has come from, but um it's always been right around eleven thousand square feet. It's fluctuated, you know, by a hundred, couple hundred square feet plus or minus thereabouts, but right around eleven thousand square feet.
Yep.
Okay.
No, one last question, I saw the, oh.
Go ahead.
I saw the plans you showed at meetings for the redesign of the rec center for the gym, the walking track and the pickleball courts. You said there was a six million dollar price tag on that, are you saying that has all been erased?
Uh, six million dollar price tag, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what that, I'm not sure what you're talking about, Nancy, to be honest with you, what, what?
Donald, I think she's talking about the the proposed Phase Two uh of additions to the rec center. Uh, it it's, it's been put on hold, it hasn't moved forward, Nancy. Um, and whether or not it goes forward is is probably two to three years out and any timing and any decision that has to be made. Uh, I think those, those plans were done to give people an idea of what it could be. Um, and but from, from, from a perspective of actually getting ready to go to bond, getting ready to do anything more than what has been done, uh that is not happening at the present time.
Okay, last question.
Last, last question.
Where does the money, where does the money go when somebody buys a membership for summer camp? Does all of that money still go to the town office or does that go to the Y in Massachusetts?
Well, we're straying a little bit from the update on the building here, but go ahead, Stuart, if you'd like to, or.
Ultimately, it goes to the Y in Bennington, Vermont.
So.
The money gets mailed to the town office?
Uh, the money gets turned in most, and and this is an accounting situation, so I'm not, I'm not totally familiar with how it works, but the money is turned in, uh but then is 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 returned to the Y as part of their operating expenses. They are obviously running the programs, uh they need the money in order to to do that, so yes, it gets, it gets back to the Y.
So every time the rates increase or there's more memberships, that money goes to the YMCA?
That, yes, that would be correct.
So Nancy, we're, we're getting way off into a tangent here, you know, we're not talking about rates right now that we, you've heard, if you were listening to the earlier part of the meeting, you've heard that a lot of programming has been offered, they've been holding the prices down, they've been finding ways to make it uh uh income sensitive, so things are fine on that front right now, okay? So I I would say, I I understand your concerns, but don't look for a problem where there isn't one right now. This, things are, things are great, in fact, uh with the, with the services that we're getting from the Y and and there's no reason right now to worry about the prices going up. If if the prices go up, that'll be something that happens in open session and there'll be an opportunity for you to talk about that. But I'd like to wrap this up because we have a a lot of people on this um meeting, so thank you for calling in, Nancy. We hope you, we've addressed the the bulk of your concerns anyway, but there's more to come. And we look forward to um more future calls from you about this as it evolves and uh certainly checking with us around budget time if you're, if you're uh wanting to see a rate increase or whatever it is that you want to see happen with the rates.
Can I just verify one thing, Donald, just to close it?
Sure.
Remember, we have a contract with the Y, if they generate more money than their contract, then the monies are then placed against the following, following contract year and could in fact reduce the cost uh of the contracted cost with the Y. So there there's a, there's a benefit to them uh bringing in more money uh than than perhaps uh we have been able to do in the past.
Well, certainly nice to see a lot more programming happening, happening there too, it's, it's a really good term of events. Anyway, um Nancy, yes, thank you for your questions and I do, you know, I'm sure you'll stay engaged and I can, I encourage you to continue to stay engaged and we'll, we'll keep, keep you up on things as as we go along. Okay?
Okay, thanks, but you know, I followed this from day one, I've asked a lot of questions and I can say tonight, many of the things you've told us over the past two years aren't what you've told us tonight. But I'll keep following it, thank you, bye.
Thank you, have a good evening. Um, um, go ahead. Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, this is just a logistical question, both for Beth and for Kayla and the slides that you showed tonight, will you make them available to the town, to them, to us? Particularly Kayla, the membership information. And the one question that you were not really able to answer exactly, if there's a way to get that data, that would be really helpful. But any of those slides would be great, thank you.
Yeah, we may well look at that information when it comes time to look at annual budgets and when it comes time to look at fee structures and and things, that 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 all could be relevant eventually, but let's not cloud the uh the issue tonight, which is that there's this amazing thing happening down there surrounding the rec center like a great big hug that is uh really going to make that space a uh much more wonderful place for all the users. Not just the people that swim there, but for all the people that uh go in and out and all the people that like um will appreciate the improved facilities and the greater safety and the uh increased blood resilience and everything else that's happening there. So on behalf of this board, I just want all of you people to know how much we appreciate what you're doing and how grateful we are to have you as community partners. And the fact that we have, except for Mark Sawyer, who's a hardworking guy and and Dan and Stu and the other town staff, I'm sure Paul's been involved. You know, we haven't really had to do very much to see all this progress happen and uh speaking on behalf of the taxpayers, I'm I'm sure you know that um everybody's very happy about that, so thank you. Any other last words from uh from the Y and the UCS crew? Oh, I see Sarah Perrin has her hand up, I'm sorry, Sarah, I was late to recognizing that, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that, so I just had one to follow up with, Bruce said, this is a great project, thank you everyone for the walkthrough today. I was really excited about this. Um, also, um if you can get to what Bruce was asking for, I think just posting something about the current fee structure, just so people know what's out there, if you can do that, that'd be awesome. I'm I'm curious myself, my husband and I are, I'm looking forward to joining, thank you.
What do you mean, just, I just want to know what you mean.
Pretty much just what's up on the wall there.
The current rate?
Yep, exactly.
Okay, now on the, on the town of Bennington website, but if you want anything else, just let me know when I can.
And the the program structure, that?
The program fees?
Yes.
Those are all, those are listed on the Berkshire Family Y website, so yes, we'll try to figure out a way to make that more cohesive.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that, thanks for the walkthrough today.
All right, well, this has been a a big meeting, having so many potentates with us and we're really glad to have you all here. Uh, Betsy, thank you, Beth, thank you, Jeff, Jack, really glad to have you, Lorna. I miss anybody, Kayla and and uh, oop, she, they just bopped out. But anyway, it's really, really great to have you all on and and thank you for, keep up the good work, we'll, we'll talk to you soon. All right.
Thank you.
Good night.
Great, thank you so much.
So Select Board, we are going to move on to a um, we are going to move on to item number four on our agenda, which is a net medium agreement uh for North Bennington Hydroelectric. Um, I'm gonna let Dan kick this off, but um I do, I hope everybody uh focused on the third paragraph of the um, of the proposed hydroelectric net medium agreement, which I'm sure Dan will. Um, because it certainly seems like a great uh, a great opportunity for us, but go ahead, Dan, what have you got for us?
Well, thanks, everybody, um tough to follow such exciting stuff happening at the rec center, but with a, with a boring agreement, but I'll try, I'll, I'll try to be brief. Um, just some quick history, um, some of you folks may recall that um when Bill Scully uh rejuvenated the tissue mill and got a hydroelectric uh generation plant up and running, the town decided to be a partner in that project and signed a twenty year agreement uh to be an off taker to purchase the the credits uh produced, the electricity credits produced by that project. We um dedicated several significant electric meters to that project uh to be used to uh take advantage of the credits that were generated uh by that facility. Um, there is now soon to be, hopefully, a new owner and they have approached the town about extending that agreement. Uh, and uh town staff has has had negotiations with them and our, our attorney has reviewed the the proposed agreement. And I am happy to say that um we were actually able to do, get even a better deal from these new folks uh for the town and the taxpayers. Uh, the original agreement did not have a a discount for the credits, uh but we have been able to negotiate a a four percent uh discount, in other words, so for every dollar of credit generated, we only pay ninety-six cents, uh we were paying a full dollar previously under the previous agreement, which was perfectly appropriate. It wasn't like it was in, it was inappropriate, but uh this is a nice benefit for this uh, this continuation of this uh, of this agreement. So essentially, we are continuing with the same agreement that we had with uh carbon zero, which Mr. Scully operated, except for we will get a four percent discount and the term will be reinstated to a full twenty years. I believe about five years have already elapsed on that original agreement. Uh, so uh town staff has reviewed it, the, our town attorney has reviewed it and we are recommending that the board approve it and authorize Stuart Hurd as the town's representative to sign that agreement so that we could proceed and continue to benefit from the um locally generated renewable energy here on our rivers in Vermont, on one of our great rivers in Vermont.
Yeah, so great, great summary, I, I don't need to read this uh, this paragraph, but I think um this board probably would have approved this with a hundred percent uh compensation to see the renewable. to see the renewable energy happen in this community. In other words, it wouldn't have costed the town anything to promote that renewable energy, which, um, Bill Scully got going. And, um, and yet it's really nice to be able to not only promote the renewable energy, but also to save 4% on our, um, net metering costs. So that's, that's really, that's really great. I asked the wrong phrase for it, but on, for our credit, uh, expenses. So I don't see why we wouldn't, um, why we wouldn't embrace this with open arms. It, it feels like the longer that turbine sits there and the longer stuff sits there not being used, the more likely it is to fall into disuse. Bill put a lot of work into getting that place so it would work. And my understanding is that the, uh, the new engineers feel there's no real problem with silt and they're just gonna turn the thing on and go, right, Dan? Is that?
They, they're confident that the, uh, silt issue can be resolved, um, simply by removing the amount of silt that was introduced and that they, they feel, they feel confident the turbines will, will function. Obviously, um, they haven't turned them on yet, but, uh, they're very confident. They have experience in renewable energy and, uh, seem to be really great, um, uh, uh, community-minded folks who really want to get this property up and running and they do have some plans to actually renovate the structure itself. Uh, so I, I think we'll see some improvements to that building probably within the, the year, next year or so.
So unless there are questions from the board, I would be looking for a motion to approve the proposed net metering agreement and authorize the town manager to sign the agreement.
I, I would move that with great pleasure and, uh, thinking fondly of all of Bill's good work, uh, that presaged this and the work of the folks who are taking it over and, and the town folks who negotiated this agreement. So happily making that motion.
Okay.
Second.
You know, thank you, thank you, Jim, for the second. Um, any further discussion? Um, I did, I forgot to check the, uh, let me just check to see if there are any callers. I should have let call it. Nope, there's no, no questions coming in from the community. So no, any further board discussion? If not, I would ask you all to unmute yourselves, uh, and please say, uh, how you voted on this.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great. I am so excited to see, uh, that hydroelectric come back online. Thank you, Dan, for making that, Dan and Stuart, for making that, um, come back to life.
Thank you.
It's, we're at the point in our, um, agenda where we'd like to talk about community policing updates. So do you and Bruce and Jean have anything for us tonight?
We do. And, um, uh, as you might have noticed, my internet again is bad. Um, uh, but we'll see what happens. But, uh, so tonight, Jean has update on community discussion boards. Bruce is gonna update us on the fall policy advisory committees and also just where we are in adopting those policies. And then I have a couple of updates if the internet allows me.
Okay, so question three is currently up on all the boards all over town. On the, it, there'll be, that question will be coming down this Thursday and the fourth question, the fourth and final question will be going up and I'll tell you what that question is in a moment. But right at this very moment, there have been 16 comments for question number three. Um, the town office is getting a lot of traffic and I realize the reason being the window where you pay your property taxes is adjacent to the board. So while people are paying their property taxes, they're also putting a comment on the board, which is great. Um, so like I said, there's, um, this question will disappear this Thursday. And then the final question, which is, how can the community better engage with the commu, with the Bennington Police Department? So this, this one, this one is putting a little bit more of the responsibility of that relationship back on the community, which I think is, is appropriate. It's a two-way street. So that one will go up on Thursday, will be up for two weeks and then this little project will come to a close.
And as for policy work, uh, this last, uh, Wednesday on the fourth, uh, a, a new group of folks, uh, as well as the three of us who are dutifully coming in, um, dealt with and I think made a pretty good draft of, uh, policy regarding responding to people in a mental health crisis. Uh, and that's a critical one and, and one where we really had to reconstruct or, or construct a policy really, uh, for 2020. So, uh, that one will be, it's making its way through. It'll be going out to the, the draft will be going back to the committee members, uh, tomorrow morning and then, uh, coming back so that it can go to our legal counsel and to the state's attorney, et cetera. Um, on the 18th, uh, the fifth, uh, of the policies will be looking at traffic stops. And, uh, and I'm hoping that, okay, I'm, I was way too optimistic, uh, two weeks ago, but, um, hold me back. I'm, I'm really optimistic now that, uh, on the 23rd, at our meeting on the 23rd, we will be introducing, um, the first three, uh, of the policies that were worked on. They will have been reviewed. And one, uh, the use of force, uh, and to the duty to intervene and the use of conductive elec, uh, electrical weapons, CEWs. So that's where we stand.
Bruce, I had asked Jean about what, what format you were going to offer us those in and she had indicated that you might offer it both as a standalone, as a, as a, um, completed document and as a red line. So we could see.
Yeah, yeah, we're going, we're going to get, yeah, what, what you will see, uh, is this, is the part that we will be adopting, which is the purpose, policy and definitions section, both in red line version and in clean version. So you can sort of see what it will look like cleaned up. The red line version depends a lot on what model we use. Uh, quite often we're using the Vermont League of Cities and Towns model, but occasionally we're, we'll use the, um, IACP model. Depends on what's available.
Thank you.
So you'll see two.
Good. All right. And so that brings us to the second, uh, we have the list of the winter-spring policies that we'll be taking up, uh, with new sets of policy advisory committees. Um, and in the, this is in the order that we'll take them up. So social media, special events, body worn cameras, collaborative partnerships, nepotism and fraternization and code of conduct. So those will be the, those will be the winter-spring, um, policies to be taken up. So we will again open in early January, we'll open up the, um, uh, the opportunity to participate in these policies, uh, for anyone that either lives or works in Bennington that would like to take part in them. And then we'll do that through the winter-spring. Um, as you know, we're still, we're still waiting for more information or looking for more information from the legislature on what they plan to do on police oversight or review boards. And we don't want to, um, move full throttle ahead until we know what they are planning to do. However, we have continued to gather information. Um, and the IACP has been really helpful. Uh, we are still working with them under the original contract that we have. We have 40 hours of consultation with them. Uh, and one of the groups that they have put us in touch with is, uh, called NA cole, N-A-C-O-L-E. And that stands for, uh, National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. So I think today, uh, Jean arranged for a really great, um, uh, slide deck that they have on, uh, both types of civilian oversight, the nuts and bolts, and also sort of the, the underpinnings of how do you think about what kind of review board you want to have? So that should be up for you to review and Jean, I think that's, it's under, it's under, um, civilian oversight. There, there's a link to it on, in the community resources under civilian.
Yeah, there really isn't a heading specifically for community oversight. So Beth's gonna create one and she was out of the office. So give her, give her a day or two to get it up. It's not on the website yet.
Okay, that's perfect. So it should be up later this week. Um, and so our, our best estimate still is that we will, uh, start the process of, uh, looking at the, um, police oversight in late, late winter, early spring, once we get a better sense from the legislature. Uh, last, we're continuing to work with a partnership and Curtis Reed, uh, most of that time at this point is, uh, he has been working with, uh, the chief and lieutenant on, uh, upcoming training that they will be facilitating for leadership in the police department. And we, um, yeah, Bruce, maybe I'm being ambitious too, but we're, we are thinking that on December 14th, the police department will be joining us to talk about, uh, trainings they've had in the last, you know, six, nine months and their, their, uh, takeaways from those trainings. Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, if, if people are chomping at the bit to want to dig into oversight, there are the bibliographies or the bibliography about, um, citizen oversight that are up on the website. So there's a lot of material on that topic that's available now.
Yeah, and I, I was looking at that today and there is at least one article from NA cole that's included in that, but you can go to their website and there are quite a few resources there. So that's it. Yeah.
Great. Good update. Thank you very much for keeping, keeping that work going. It's, really appreciate what you're doing there, what we're doing here. Next item on our agenda is the manager's report. Stuart, uh, what have you got for us tonight?
Uh, well, someone did mention, uh, the taking taxes at the window on the front porch. Uh, in talking with the staff in the collections department, uh, we are told that things appear to be moving steadily along. Uh, as, uh, November 11th is the final day and, uh, uh, I'm sorry, November 10th. I'm sorry. Yes, the 11th is a holiday. Um, we should know then, uh, how well, uh, we've done in our tax collections this year and then that may give rise to some discussions following that as to, uh, what we do about, uh, delinquencies and, and those kinds of things. So that is another issue we'll probably be dealing with within the next month or so.
But to be clear, Stuart, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but just to make sure nobody misses it, taxes are due tomorrow on the 10th.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Not the 11th, because there's a hefty fine if you.
I know.
I know, I paid it once.
Yes, November 10th.
So, um, you know, that they're due on the 10th, that's tomorrow. And I think we've said to other people, but if, you know, there, if there are COVID issues that you need, you anticipate not being able to pay your taxes, then we, this board has invited you to talk to the town government about what the COVID issue is for you there.
And along those lines, Donald, if I could, I have been advising people to pay what they can. And, and we'll, we will consider it in, in future meetings, uh, depending on what we see and, uh, where, where the problems lie for people who have been, uh, negatively impacted by the virus. So that's to come.
Thank you for, thank you for working with people as they, as they need it.
Mr. Chairman.
You have your hand up. I'm gonna take Jean first, Jim, and then I'll go to you.
Yeah, this is actually, you, still, you can finish. This is sort of a little aside. Um, it's about Shannon's report, but I didn't mean to interrupt your report. You can finish.
Let's, let's see if, before he does, let's see if, uh, Jim has a question on this particular point. Do you have a question about taxes?
Yeah, just a, a comment that in, um, Senate Bill 344, there was provision that was adopted into law and signed by the governor that allows people or municipalities to, uh, to forgive penalties with respect to, uh, delinquencies if they demonstrate that, uh, COVID-19 has been an impediment to them. So let's be clear about that. Okay?
Okay, Stu, back to you.
Okay, uh, just to note that a couple of projects that are out to bid, uh, we're, we're moving once again to get prices on the, uh, continuing remediation, uh, of the South End Line. This is the water problems where we have pressure problems in the higher elevations. Uh, we put out this project out to bid last year. The bid prices came in unusually high. So we're rebidding that with the hope that with all of the contractors in the community, there'll be some interest, uh, and get a little bit better bid price for us. Uh, and also at the end of this month or before the month is out, we should be bidding the Morgan Spring, uh, delivery system relocation project. There, uh, we're hoping to see what the prices are, uh, which will then allow us to, uh, have more substantive negotiations with, uh, the two vendors that are currently purchasing our water to see whether or not there is any interest in participating in this particular project. So those, those things are on the, on the horizon. Uh, two additional notes here. Uh, you may have seen the, uh, paper, uh, the mayoral petition, uh, the same one that was filed in 2018, uh, has been refiled. They have sufficient signatures so that we will be considering a charter change, uh, in May, in, uh, March of 2021. Um, and, uh, that will be, uh, coming before us. Uh, we'll have to have at least, I think it's two public hearings on the charter change. Uh, so I've got to get back into the statutes and make sure we get the timing right.
Yeah, but we'll do that this winter, right? That'll happen over the course of the winter.
Yes, it will. Most likely, uh, early, probably early January, late December and sometime in late February. Uh, there are, there are timings that you have to meet, but we'll, we'll find out what those are and get those out.
Okay.
The second thing is, is a, a program that has been developed, uh, by the state of Vermont as part of the, uh, COVID funding programs and it's called COVID-19 Arrangement Assistance Program. Uh, this is a program that is being offered, uh, to municipalities. The municipality must decide to join and we have. Uh, it allows us to register our municipality and then allows households and businesses who may have had trouble paying their utility bills. And here I'm addressing water and sewer, uh, delinquencies. Uh, and there's a very specific timeframe. Uh, we're gonna be getting a press release up on our website so people can, uh, understand all of the details. But it's a COVID-related, uh, delinquency that has occurred between, I think it's March of last year and moving into this year. Uh, and if in fact people qualify, that arrangement will be paid by the state of Vermont directly to the municipality, uh, therefore helping people, uh, meet their obligations, uh, on, on our utility, uh, usage and costs. So we'll get that up tomorrow. Uh, it was just announced Friday. Um, and, uh, we did, uh, register, uh, quickly just so that people, uh, will be able to take advantage of it if in fact they can show that their delinquency is COVID-related. Um, and there, there is an application process that people must go through. So that's what I've got for tonight.
Let's, let's be sure to push the word out on that.
Will do.
Um, we, uh, are, also you're skipping over the, uh, also in your staff report or your informational stuff was Tony Honorato.
Oh, yes.
For 41 years is retiring and Brian Biller, who we know to be a wonderful and very competent guy that's been running a water system, stepping in and, and so, uh, thank you very much to Tony and, and thanks, Brian, for stepping up. So those, those are two great changes.
And thank you for catching that, Donald. That's appreciated.
Good. Couple of really great workers for the town. Okay, um, so we are, Jean, did you have something else to say before we close this meeting down?
Yeah, I, I, I always read Shannon's report and it's always so full of positive, wonderful things. Um, I know Stark Street Playground is done and I've been over there a few times. Um, I just, it's tucked back and people don't ride by it and I feel like it doesn't get the attention that it really deserves. It's beautiful back there. I don't know how to, I don't know, play up Stark Street more than, I, 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 it's just, it's so far off the beaten track that, um, I, every time I'm, I'm over there, I'm always sort of wishing it was in a much more visible location, but it's a gem. It's a little gem back there. So just wanted to give Stark Street a plug. We didn't get to do a ribbon cutting or anything like that because of COVID and I think it's, it's kind of a shame. Maybe we should do it in the spring, even though it's way late, um, just to get people back there.
I'm, I, I, Donald, let me just add on to Jean and, and a conversation I had with, uh, I think a grandmother. Uh, I'm there almost every Thursday, at least once, if not twice, uh, with my grandson. And, uh, came, you know, we're meeting more people there in the late morning, early afternoon. So, so that's always, that's good. Um, and. And the, the reactions have been nothing but positive. And the staff that worked on that, the folks who did it, the private funders who participated in it, thank you so much. Its connection to the trail system is wonderful. So just as somebody who's there at least once a week, because we have to go there with my grandson. So that's, thank you, Jean, for raising that.
Great. All right, Stuart, thank you for the report. Upcoming agenda, I think we have quite a lot next week on the next meeting from the Community Policing Group. Not sure how much more room we'll have on the agenda. But are there other necessary items that board members would like to put forward for that November 20?
23rd.
Yeah, the 23rd meeting.
Yeah, I, I don't find anything, Donald, that, that we haven't talked about.
Okay. I don't have anything on my list right now. So we will see what happens between now and then. Other business, I would welcome, welcome, we have to, an executive session for contracts and personnel, so I would welcome other business comments from the board at this time.
Just to, for everybody to remember that the 11th is Veterans Day. And go out of your way to find a veteran, somebody who has served our country that way. Please think also of responders and think of it also, be reminded that it was originally called Armistice Day. A day of peace. So let's be thinking those kinds of thoughts as well.
Thank you, Bruce. Let's see, Jean and then Jim. Oh, Jean, no, sorry, old hand. Jim, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just a reminder to folks that people may be aware that both through Vermont Digger and Seven Days, that Walmart has refused to participate in the the hazard pay that people are eligible for. And it's come to my notice that the other businesses have refused to comply. And this has been widely talked about in Montpelier with consideration that the Attorney General get involved. But if there are people who have asked their employers and their employers have to apply for this money and they have refused, I want to know about it. In Bennington District 22, I am still your representative until January, and I'm also your selectman. And if you deserve that, for those people who didn't collect unemployment, who stayed on the front lines and literally put their lives at risk, I want to know, and I want to help in any way that I can. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Anyone else? We have a need to go into an executive session on contracts and personnel. I would look for a motion. We will not be making a decision coming out of this executive session. But I would look for a motion to go into executive session to discuss contracts and personnel. Would somebody like to unmute themselves and make a motion, please?
Still moved.
Thank you, Jeanie.
I can.
Thank you, Bruce. I saw you, I saw Bruce make the motion, but he was still muted. Okay, so we are going to vote to go into executive session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Bennington. Glad to be with you tonight. We'll be back on the 23rd. Citizens Comment, everything the way it normally is, we'll be at the beginning of the meeting, and we look forward to hearing from you. If not, before then, we'll, we'll catch you on the 23rd.